Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Want to welcome, I've lost my place on the agenda. Want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask you to wait for that item to come up to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, we would ask that you address the council under public communications. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm not sure that we have any young people in the audience tonight. Is there anybody here under age 12? Not seeing anyone. Well, since we don't have any young people here, how about the newest member of our staff? Nicole, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I have none this evening.
Okay, council, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
If.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is Public Communications, and we have one scheduled public communication this evening. And that is a proclamation proclaiming June 19th as Juneteenth Day in Johnston. I don't know that we have anybody in the audience here to receive the proclamation this evening. However, I will go ahead and read it. And then, Maddie, do you want to take a picture? Fabulous. Again, the title of this proclamation is "Juneteenth Day 2024. Whereas, on June 19th, 1865, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of the Civil War and the emancipation of the enslaved African-Americans, finally enforcing President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation of January 1, 1863. And whereas, Juneteenth, a combination of June and 19th, has become the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States, symbolizing freedom and the enduring struggle for equality and justice. And whereas, the celebration of Juneteenth is an opportunity for all Americans to learn more about our shared history and to reflect on the values of freedom, equality, and the pursuit of happiness for all citizens. And whereas, Juneteenth serves as a reminder of the resilience and contributions of African-Americans to our society and highlights the importance of continuing to work towards a more inclusive and equitable nation. And whereas, in recognition of the historical significance of Juneteenth and the ongoing fight against systemic racism, it is fitting to honor this day with the appropriate ceremonies, activities, and reflections. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paula Dierfeld, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth Day in Johnston, Iowa, and encourage all residents to join in the celebration of this significant event, to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans, and to recommit to the ideals of liberty and justice for all. And I am signing it and dating it today and placing the Johnston City Seal on the proclamation. With that, can I ask the council to join me?
That looks good. Perfect, thank you.
We are still under public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? And if you would, just come forward to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name's Angela Tedesco. I live at 7260 Northwest 58th Street in Johnston. I have a letter to the city council from myself and my husband, and from two other people from our neighborhood. And I'm commenting in regard to the situation at Ellipsus that has seemed to be compounded and getting worse. I want to thank the mayor and the city manager for holding a meeting that was very informative and I think helpful for helping us realize what we need to do to make a change. And we recognize that maybe you can't do as much as we would like for you to do because of the way the rules are set, but we hope that you will continue to push for change along with the neighborhood. I've lived in this neighborhood for 35 years, and maybe on two occasions years ago, there was a youth from the home that came back to our area. We're kind of back on the long driveway, so they don't often come down there. But our neighbors have had more occurrences with increasing hostility or damage to their properties or thefts. And then, of course, there was the recent death, I believe it was a classmate of my daughter's at Johnston High School. So that was very sad to bring reality home to the seriousness of the situation. I guess a lot of what got the neighborhood attention was the idea of putting up the eight-foot fence. And for me personally, my husband, the fence is just a Band-Aid on a situation and it's not a solution. If you have a sink that's overflowing with water, you don't grab them up, you turn off the faucet. So I would like to see solutions that would address helping the children with their mental health issues. Perhaps there needs to be more staff, more money for that, other things other than a fence. A fence would not be a welcoming environment for the children to come home to every day if they left the premises or the first time they arrive there. It doesn't seem like it would be welcoming. It wouldn't look, our neighborhood wouldn't look very welcoming for anyone who would drive by there if there were an eight-foot fence. But like I said, we'd rather address the issues that we will contact our legislators and the governor for and the DHS. We just hope you will continue to support that and recognize that something needs to happen that's been going on too long. Where should I hand these letters?
Why don't you give them to Cindy? And are there others that are going to speak on this issue? Why don't we, why don't we hear all of the comments first, and then I'll just, I'll share some comments to kind of wrap things up.
My name is Rita Deddy. I live at 5447 Northwest 72nd Place, which is just north of Ellipsus. I just want to say that I support everything that Angela just told you. We found out from meetings that there are children that are now at Ellipsus that are more, I don't know the right word, hardcore. And so it concerns me that the children that are there for foster care and who have come out of abusive houses and are being there to be protected are now housed with children that are maybe the abusers themselves. And I think that's a great concern. I've heard from neighbors about concerns that they've had with damage to their property, stolen property, all kinds of things like that. And I agree with what Angela said, that a fence is not a solution. It's something that maybe is supposed to make people feel better, but it's not going to solve the problem. So I just want to speak in support of something happening with Ellipsus that addresses safety of the, not only the boys that live there, but the residents that live there, so that the city of Johnston can maintain that feeling that it's safe to live in this area.
And I didn't catch your name, what is it?
Rita Deddy.
Rita, what was your address again?
5447 Northwest 72nd Place.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak to the council on this particular topic? Well, if not, I just want to say Rita and Angela, thank you for coming here this evening, and thank you for sharing the letters and the comments with us. The city administrator and I did spend some time with about 50 of the residents in the neighborhood last week, and had I, had I, I think, a very good conversation with the group that was there. It did give us an opportunity to share, you know, what, what we can do from a city perspective, which Angela, you kind of summed it up correctly. There's, there's little we can do from a legal perspective to address the situation out there. Certainly, and, and that's because our zoning, zoning laws are such that, that, that they don't allow us to do, to do much in terms of addressing the specific problem out there. We did suggest, and I, and I appreciate the fact that the neighbors are following up, you know, the, the agencies or the agencies that can really impact and, and address the issue out there is the state legislature, is the governor's office, and is the Department of Health and Human Services. They're the ones that license and regulate and, and fund that agency out there. And so they're the ones that really can, can address the situation. Having said that, that, that facility is in our community, and we do put a high priority on the safety and security of our residents here. So we will continue to be part of the conversation. We want to continue to, to hear from the residents out there, and we will continue to have conversation with the administration at Ellipsus, with, with our state legislators, with the governor's office, and with the director of the Department of Health and Human Services to find that solution, as, as you suggested, the two of you have suggested, to address the concerns that, that we all share with the situation out there. So, again, thank you for coming this evening. We'll have more conversation. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to consider Resolution Number 24-160, ratifying notice of public hearing and publication thereof, public hearing on the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement, and issue us some notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder. Approval of Resolution Number 24-161, instituting proceedings, proceedings to take additional action. Resolution Number 24-162, approving and authorizing a form of interim loan and disbursement agreement by and between the city and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of not to exceed $700,000 water revenue capital loan notes anticipated project note, Series 2024B, for the Northwest Saylorville Drive Water Main Extension, Segment C Project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:15.
Yes, this is for the State Revolving Fund Planning and Design Loan. It's a 0% interest loan for Segment C of Water Main Extension to the Northwest Saylorville Drive Annexation Area, as the mayor said, in an amount not to exceed 700,000. The reason we need to take this public hearing today is because there were some publication issues, and it wasn't properly published. So this is the action to correct that mistake. So is there any questions on this matter?
It wasn't a mistake made on our behalf, it was a mistake made on the publication side,
Any questions for Shane? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:16. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-160?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-161?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-162?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I would just note, and I don't see David Wilberding here, but I would just bring to your attention item 5I, and that is the receipt of $125,000 from Mid-American Energy towards the, the water trail access point that we are going to be building down on the Estes Health and Highway Road. It was announced at the ICAAN meeting last week that we would be receiving that award, and we are the only city in Polk County that will be receiving that. So I've extended my appreciation to them for, for granting us that money. Any other, any other comments about the consent agenda? If not, we had a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item 7A. Consider approval of the second reading of Ordinance Number 1121, amending Chapter 88, Erosion and Sediment Control of the Johnson Code of Ordinances. Clayton?
There have been no changes nor public comments received since first reading. Happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Council, any questions for Clayton?
Just that I think we, we have had some discussion about after we, if second reading is approved, waiving third reading and adopting and publishing. I just want to verify with staff that they were...
Staff would certainly be supportive of that. That would keep us, or allow us to have this in effect prior to July 1 when the state law changes.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1121?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item...
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to waive third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance 1121.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider second reading of Resolution Number 24-115, authorizing a moratorium on fire sprinkler threshold enforcement. Chief?
Mayor and council, there has been a modification, as requested by councilmember Coke at the last, well, the first reading a month ago. That was to indicate that this would only take effect upon the third reading passing the resolution. So we worked with Christine, we got her, got her language to update it to reflect that request, and we've had no other outside communications about this matter, and that is really the only change to the resolution.
Any questions or comments for the chief? Do we have a motion to approve second reading of Resolution Number 24-115?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mayor, I, I just want to make a comment. I again, for, in the second reading, will be voting no on this. I believe we have a process in place by which we can take up in a routine basis and predictable basis for developers and others within our community, these ordinance changes, and this is outside of that. I also, probably more importantly, have had time to be able to sit as part of the Fire Board Strategic Planning Session. We've discussed in different matters where we're certainly absent of data right now in some of our discussions and goals moving forward. And to some extent, I think it would behoove everyone to vote no in this until we get appropriate data regarding response time for full force, which was one of the things that the chief indicated as to why Des Moines had adopted a much more stringent sprinklering policy, because they themselves could not be at a full supportive force for their fire. So until we get that data, until we get kind of our universal call to be able to exchange communications with Westcom, which would be Urbandale, until we get those, I think it would be premature for us to, to, to do and make this change. So I'll be voting no.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
No.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider Resolution Number 24-164, approving and authorizing execution of Amendment Number 4 to the Purchase, Sale, and Development Agreement, binding between the city of Johnston and Johnston Golf Development LLC.
Good evening, council. This evening, you're considering an amendment number four to what we locally know as our bomber's development agreement. This would be extending some performance deadlines, most specifically a deadline to, for the developer to secure financing and equity for the project. This would extend the deadline from today to September 16th, 2024. And ultimately, this would push a couple of other dates forward. The full assessment date would move to January 1, 2026, and their tip rebate payments would also be pushed forward one year. No financial, no changes to the city's financial commitment are included in this amendment. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
I do have a quick question. I understand these things gets postponed now, everything gets postponed. Do you have a timeline when the golf course will be ready, the bombas golf will be ready?
Question, so it would push the date until September 16th this fall to secure financing and further continue construction. The completion of the construction would be September 17th, 2025, so basically a 12-month construction period.
It should be ready by September 17, 25, ready for actual operation.
Correct, yeah. Thank you for that question.
And I would just say, I mean, obviously, this is, I mean, we, we're currently projecting the value of this project at $36 million.
Correct, for the golf facility and hotel.
Yeah, and that's probably on the low end. And so the, if any of us have gone out and tried to raise $36 million recently, it's hard, right? It's just complex. And so I, and I, so I think a lot of these things, and knowing and being able to project the timetable, is really driven a little bit by, and not just even what's happening in Johnston, but sort of national economic and really financial, you know, changes environments and, and, and to the types of folks who, who loan or, or make equity investments in these kind of projects. So I think it's, I, I think we just have to kind of understand that that's part of the challenge, and I, I, that's why I even get nervous to certain extents to sort of say, what, when's this going to be built by or whatever, because to a certain, this is obviously, it's a private project, right? And they've got to work and figure that all out, and I, and I respect significantly the work that they're doing to get this built as quickly as possible. I think they're doing a great job on that, but there's a lot of challenges. I think it's important to kind of, for us to all acknowledge that and understand that, that it's...
I totally agree with you what you said, Tom. I was just trying to understand what's the timetable. It's a rough number. Doesn't mean that it happens every, except for September 17th. It will not happen that day.
Right. So...
Sure. Cool. Get it in. Question. And mayor, if I may, I think at this point, maybe it's important to share a little bit about the progress that's made on the site, so the full council is aware. The developer has made notable progress. Sanitary sewer main has been extended to serve the, all of the lots on the site. The water main has been extended to serve all of the lots on the site. The master detention pond is constructed, as well as the stormwater sewer infrastructure has been extended to serve all of the lots. The internal streets have been installed and developed. The footings and foundations have been completed. The electrical service raceways and transformer pad have been installed. The grease interceptor is installed. The steel shop drawings have been completed, and this will allow the, the process for the steel manufacturer to move more quickly, so the design is done. And the project has been fully permitted for vertical construction with the city, so they have paid for that permit, so thank you.
Thank you for that update, Josh. It's not obvious, looking from the street, that all of that has happened, so it's good to, good that you shared that information.
Questions?
Any other questions for Josh? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-164?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D, consider approval of the following items related to stormwater management. Second reading of ordinance number 1120, amending Chapter 87, post-construction stormwater management of the city, of the Johnson Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number 24-167, adopting the amended city of Johnson supplemental specifications to the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual. Clayton?
Good evening. One change to both the ordinance and the supplemental design standards that you saw from the first reading. This relates to channel protection standards to mitigate against downstream erosion of stream bank and stream channels themselves. In further reviewing the Senate file, that legislation restricts abilities of a city to regulate five-year through 100-year storm events, and the proposed revisions here address channel protection volumes for that one-year storm event. That's a storm event that is not restricted for us to, to regulate. So that does add that back into both the ordinance as well as to the design standards. Other than that, everything else remains the same as first reading. No further, well, no public comments have been received. Staff is recommending approval, and should the council desire similar to the topsoil, staff would be supportive of waiving third reading to allow for this to be effective prior to July 1 when the state legislation goes into effect.
Does council have any questions for Clayton? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1120?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
And mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive third reading of ordinance 1120 and to waive, adopt and publish ordinance, waive third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance 1120.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-167?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item, item 7E, consider approval of the second reading of ordinance number 1122, amending Chapters 176, 177, and 185 of the Johnson zoning ordinance, PZK's 24-18.
There have been no, no public comments and no changes. Staff would be open to waiving third reading.
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1122?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven F, consider approval of resolution number twenty-four dash one seventy-two, a minor PUD amendment to the Windsor Town Homes PUD to allow for one monument sign located at the intersection of Northwest Ninetieth Street and Windsor Parkway.
So this was brought to us by EPCON Communities, and they're looking to have their monument sign be calculated using formula, formula A instead of formula B for their monument sign, which, uh, what it would look like therefore. Uh, they currently don't have any signage, uh, regulations in their, their PUD themselves, so this would strictly just be adding that they could use their one monument sign located at the corner of Northwest Ninetieth and Windsor Parkway, using calc, formula A instead of formula B. All their monument signs and signs, signage would fall under our current signage regulations. So that's the only, only change or addition in that case. I can answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
So can you explain the difference between formula B and...
It's like, yeah, so the, the main difference is, is really just kind of how we're looking at it. Uh, we see here, formula, formula B is just taking those, the areas of imageable kind of wording and putting boxes around them and kind of calculating the area that way, whereas formula B is taking that whole, whole area of that wall, so...
And they're, and they're putting it on the retention wall.
Since they're putting on the retention, the retention walls, they're going to have the, the formula, they're, they're basically eaten up by that wall.
Okay.
So that's the reasoning behind that, for it.
Any other questions for Jacob? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash one seventy-two?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven G, consider approval of claims in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and five cents. Do we have a motion? Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Don't slow us down. We are on a roll. Any city, city administrator comments?
All I was going to say is, it was a, a great parade, sprinkled a little bit, find a nice tree, it was a great parade to watch. So, um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy, I'm going to allow her to make an introduction.
Good evening. Uh, joining us tonight is our new deputy city clerk payroll person, Nicole Roberts. Uh, Nicole comes to us with quite a bit of HR payroll experience out of the private sector, so y'all making her believe that there's a thirty-minute council meeting is something to be proud of. If this can continue, she will keep her job. Anyway, uh, if you have a chance, stop by and introduce yourself to Nicole on your way out. Thank you.
Welcome, Nicole. Mike, give me a call.
Just one quick update. Did want to, uh, let everybody know that we should be completing the, uh, vegetative debris collection, uh, later this week. Uh, we should wrap that up by Wednesday or Thursday of this week, so be happy to report that we'll be done, done doing that and moving on to other daily activities.
Is the little tiger on Pioneer Parkway still one of our Public Works Fest?
Uh, oh, I, I do know what you're talking about. I don't believe that, but... So please explain. I, I did see it in the little garden out there next to the tree. I'm not sure, we got his hat and his vest, so, um, but no, he, it, it is not a Public Works Fest, so...
Well, you know, I, I, I haven't talked to the, to the property owner, and I'm not sure I even know who it is, but there's this little ceramic tiger in this little garden area when you drive down Pioneer Parkway, and depending on the season or what's going on, they, they dress this little tiger up, so it just recently had a graduation cap on. But now it has this little green reflective vest, and I'm just thinking that they probably did that as a, you know, as a, uh, an appreci, a show of appreciation for the good work that our Public Works and our Parks folks have done in the, in the debris cleanup, so... Anyway, I'm glad you noticed it, I've, and I, and I'm curious, I, I think that's what it's all about, and, and even if it's not, let's just pretend like it is. But you got there, you got there. Any other, uh, staff comments? Okay, if not, uh, Councilman Evans, welcome back.
Uh, thank you, glad to be back. Um, there's no place like home, and, uh, getting back and, and coming into Johnston, um, I'm very appreciative of how clean and maintained, um, everything is, and, uh, the only comment is we, we def, and I, I, I'm sorry, we need a lot more trees. So, that's it.
I know, it's no comment.
Councilman Coe?
I just want to thank everybody, um, staff and citywise who was involved in all the activities over the weekend, and also, I would, I would, I would love for us to find a way to recognize a lot of the volunteers that were involved in, in, whether it be Green Days, or frankly, we have a lot of community volunteers that volunteer in lots of different things, but there's a lot of people, I, I saw, I think it's Pam Cussera out this morning at like seven o'clock picking up signs, and I saw her throughout the weekend doing things, and I just, I think sometimes, um, we, we, we need to thank the volunteers in our community as well, and I, and so I would, really, I think maybe a resolution or something to the chamber, um, supporting their work on Green Days, because they work as, as hard as, and, and it would, we would, Green Days could not happen without city staff, right? I mean, it's amazing, all the work, and it's not just the parade, but it's all these different things, and Chief McDaniel handing out the championship belt at, uh, for the Smoking Heroes competition, um, and all the different folks involved, and everything that everybody else did. But, um, anyway, I just appreciate all, all the good work as it related to that, and it was a great parade.
Let me just, uh, follow up on that. You know, I don't think we have or ever have had any kind of a special recognition, whether it's a certificate or just, um, you know, an invitation to come to the council and, and express our appreciation. I think that's something, Matty has left already, but I think that's something that we should ask the communications department to, to think about.
You're talking for volunteers?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the thing too is that we have so many organizations in which people are volunteer leaders in too, and so I, I think a little, I mean, that's a quality of life committee can look and think about.
There we go. That's a good place.
Something to kind of, kind of do.
Yep, very good. Great suggestion.
I'll be rather brief. I want to echo the sentiments. I thank everyone in, in the city and the volunteers for a fun, uh, and festive Green Days. Uh, I, I also need to somewhat apologize, and they wouldn't have known it, but I left it off my notes, uh, I had it in my notes, but left it off my comments last meeting. It's still as important as ever. Um, we thank quite frequently the heroes that we employ within this city, uh, and especially in times of dangerous situations or dangerous weather, and I am, uh, no less thankful for all that you do, Public Works and Public Safety, Fire, Police, uh, in making sure that we are well-protected and even can, uh, recover and recoup after, uh, serious events like the tornadoes we had. But there was also another group that I had wanted to mention and give a shout out to, and their, um, work residents, so to speak, of the City of Johnston and at least nearby Johnston, they pass through our city, uh, on their ways to work, and that's the National Weather Service. Um, we, in, in some ways, are blessed to be able to have such talented and, uh, very, uh, knowledgeable folks, uh, in our area, uh, and serving the entire state at times, and certainly at least within the Des Moines metro area, um, with regard to that. I say blessed at times, uh, because it's sometimes, uh, their radar is so close that they can't always give us the best...
We're in that donahole.
Exactly, that donahole, um, that cone of silence, so to speak. Um, but all the same, uh, it was driven home to me even more of the events of the last month or thirty days, um, by all the importance that they do in their education and their